Good evening. Welcome to the board meeting. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. A motion, please, to approve the agenda. Tina and Isetta? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. Tonight, we have a presentation. We begin the work on the next year's budget. And Mr. Megan, would you like to take over?
Can you hear me now through the microphone?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to be attempting to share a number of documents on the screen throughout tonight's discussion. You do all have a manila folder at your seat that does have hard copies. And the order that they are in, provided I did it correctly, should walk us right through. So there's a PowerPoint presentation, but I've implemented some specific sheets as we go through. I'm going to start out with we're going to talk a little bit about the budget. It's a little bit earlier than maybe we sometimes get into it, but we have a lot going on. And we want to get through a number of items, get a good jump on it. Couple of items that we're going to touch base on tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about state aid and some of the things that have been going on. A little bit about some extra expenditures we've had to make this year that maybe we didn't necessarily plan on due to the COVID-19 situation. We will talk about a budget calendar for the year, which does always happen in October every year. We'll then take some time, and this will be the bulk of it, talking about some five-year financial projections for the district. We'll talk a little bit about, as we get into the budget, what our instructional priorities will be. Megan will jump in there for a minute or so. And then I just want to talk a little bit about generating revenue in future years by using expenditures that are aidable. So as many of you are aware, there is a potential for the state to withhold up to 20% of the state aid that's due to districts in New York State. Now, that, just upfront on its own, is a straight percentage, really hurts the more rural, low-income districts. Because we're a district that relies so heavily on state aid compared to many others. For example, 2/3 of our entire budget is funded by state aid. Basically, our tax levy makes up the bulk of the rest of the money. You can go to the other end of the county, and there's a district that is actually the exact opposite. 2/3 of their budget is done through taxes. And 1/3 of their budget is all they have to rely on from state aid. So obviously, in a situation like that, if a percentage of aid is withheld, it's a much larger part of our budget than it would be for that other district. When you get downstate, it's even much more extreme. The percentage of their budget down around New York City, except for in the city itself, the percentage of their budget that relies on funding from state aid is very small. So a percentage withholding to them doesn't do a lot to their budget. At this point, we don't have clear answers as far as what a percentage withholding would look like. Historically, whenever there's been changes in state aid, building aid has been safe. Because when you do capital projects, you're putting together a financial plan for 15 years out, or sometimes 30 years, depending on what your project looks like. So for that reason, the impact on messing with building aid would be very large. So our hope is that if there is some withholding, that they would not touch the building aid piece. You heard me comment earlier this summer that our 1920 aid, so that's the last school year, some of that, our final payments come in over the summer and early fall. And we received notice in August that some of our aid from last year was not being paid out to us. It was being withheld at about 20%. So for example, there's $188,000 worth of BOSI's aid, again, last year's aid, and we had just accrued it on the books, but it was withheld, we didn't receive it. Additionally, there was excess cost aid to a little over $70,000 that we did not receive. And at the time, we were also being told we'd have a little over $200,000 of our general aid not paid. When you add those up, that was almost a half a million dollars of money that we had planned to go ahead and put into reserves at the end of last year. We took action in June to fund those reserves. And then, as I updated you in my dashboards in August and September, we had to reduce those numbers. We didn't want to put money in reserves that we were not sure we were going to get. The good news to that is the $210,000 of general aid has come through. So our shortage from last year now, at this point, is about $160,000. If that is paid to us and made up, that's great. That will be just additional revenue for this year that we'll be able to fund our expenses with. And if we get to the end of the year and have fund balance left, we can appropriate to reserves at that point. In addition to the fear of possibly not receiving our aid that we build our budget on, we've had some unplanned expenses that have come along specifically as a result of COVID-19. For example, there's some extra software and apps we had to buy, about $2,600 worth. We were in a good spot with our hardware, where we had one-to-one devices for all students. But we've had a lot of turnover. Students have to bring things in if they're not working. So we've had to buy some additional hardware, Chromebooks, some cameras, or things such as what we're doing now, microphones. That's about $4,000. Our big expenditure was to get hotspots. Hotspots, of course, provide internet service largely to a number of our students that do not have it, possibly a few staff members. And that ran us $132,000. Now, we did run that through BOSI's, and as we'll talk at the very end, that's what we call an aidable expenditure. But it's $132,000 that we did not build into the budget. That also is a number that should cover us for the year. So depending on how long we need to be dependent upon online learning, that expenditure is done. As far as hardware, software, we may have additional expenditures through the year. That's what we spent through date, or to date. PPE, or personal protective equipment, masks, dividers around secretary's desks, things like that, additional cleaners and disinfectants. We've spent an additional $60,000 above what we would normally spend in a year covering those cleaning types of things. We're in good shape with that now, but again, depending on how long we're dealing with this pandemic, that number could grow throughout the year. And what I've said here is, you know, this is not an all-inclusive list necessarily, but it's a good $200,000 of expenditures minimally that we're going to have this year that were unplanned and unbudgeted. I do want to point out that we do try to capitalize on aid where we can. As I mentioned, the hotspots going through BOSI's is an aidable expense. However, those aids do not help us this year, but they build additional revenues for next year. We've also done things such as a lot of the PPE equipment, masks for students, et cetera. As you know, all of our students, when they ride the buses, they must have masks. So if we're handing out masks for students to wear on buses, we're going to put that in the transportation category and pay for it out of our transportation budget to generate transportation aid for next year. Also, with some of our cleaners, when I say cleaners, not people, but, you know, disinfectant products. We bought some tank sprayers for the buses. Those types of things we are purchasing through transportation to generate aid in future years. Not even listed on here, we have seen a very large spike in unemployment costs. I'll talk a little bit about that as we get into our five-year financial projections. You know, we've taken the line that we're trying to keep as many of our people employed as we can. If we were to furlough or lay off people, we would increase unemployment costs even more. And what we've done is we've tried to work with all our staff to, at times, reassign what their normal duties are to keep them employed, keep the unemployment costs down, and find a way that they can serve the community possibly in a different way. For example, when we have, you know, teacher aides and monitors helping with the lunch distribution program. Those are costs that, by employing them on that Wednesday during those hours, they're able to serve the community there. Right now, unemployment is processing claims pretty quickly. There is a potential that some of the money we have paid, we may actually get back at a later date as they go through and they analyze claims. Because the approach that's been taken is if someone files and it looks semi-reasonable, they award it. Because many people out there are without income, and they've been awarding probably more than they should in some situations. So as they are catching up, which I hear in the last few weeks they're starting to do, they're analyzing some claims where maybe a person shouldn't really qualify for all of that unemployment, and they will be contacting those people to pay it back, which means we will then be credited with that amount. Okay, this is when I'm going to get fancy, and I'm going to try to jump to a different document and put the budget calendar up on the screen. That's just a very small version of it there. This is on the agenda to be approved by the Board of Education tonight. Bear with me, please. Having trouble getting to go back to full screen so I can get the share. The full size. I believe I found it. You can see it? Okay, I can. Okay, so the very first thing on our budget calendar is today's date. So the Board of Education is going to review the five-year financial projections, which we do every fall. And we're talking a little bit about our budgeting process tonight. In November, I will be distributing some packets to buildings where they will begin their budget work. And just to give you a little bit of an idea, I'm going to switch documents here. I apologize, it's not coming up as a shareable item. But in your packet, you have a grid showing building allocation. So this is just a basic piece of what I distribute every year to each building administrator. We do upfront right in the budget process, give allocations to the buildings, and that is based solely on the projected enrollment for next year. So as you can see, at the top, you have our projected enrollment for the elementary school. And we assign a dollar amount per student for materials and supplies that also would cover contractual items like assemblies or things like that. We have a textbook amount, and then just a flat equipment amount. So principals are given those numbers as a starting point. I meet with them and go through, you know, what areas they can use for what type of expenditures, et cetera. And those numbers stay pretty consistent year to year. We do also, I've noted at the bottom, since we implemented PBIS a number of years ago, we do include an extra $1,500 per building to support PBIS activities. And we also, for students in K through 8, we do not send home lists of the purple folder. Parents have to go out and try to find, and then they can't find it. We do provide all student supplies for up. When all students come in, they all get the same supplies in the classroom, they're there for them. So there's some additional funding provided for that. The next thing that will happen after I distribute the building budget packets is on December 8th, the Board of Education has a meeting. And at that point, we'll look for the board to adopt the five-year financial projections. As I said, we're going to talk about those tonight. And actually, you're going to see a few different scenarios because there are so many unknowns. When we get to December and it's time to adopt, we may still have to consider three different scenarios to adopt. We may be able to let, or take it down to one, because we've got some direction. Or we may be looking at totally different ones. Just going down the list here, I'm not going to touch on every item. But as we get into January, the second board meeting in January will be budget time. That's on January 26th. And at that point, I'll share with you our budget staffing for buildings at that point, as well as the allocations, very similar to what I just shared with you about building allocations. We'll also talk about our transportation and facilities needs and what we estimate as expenditures needed in those areas for next year. The next time the board is involved directly will be at the second meeting in February, February 23rd. At that point, we'll go through our anticipated expenditure needs for the following year for special education and for athletics. At that point, we also hopefully will have a proposal from the governor's office estimating next year's aid. Generally, that comes out the very end of January. Things have been a little different the last couple of years. But I will share with you at that point the most current information that we have on estimates of state aid. We also, at that meeting, will review our funding and use of reserves policy, which we do every February, a document that looks at every single one of our reserves, the purpose of those reserves, what our current levels are, and what we need to be considering for the future with each of them. That will be discussed there and will receive a formal adoption at the end of the school year in June. In March, at the second meeting, you will see a full draft of both our expenditure spending plan as well as our revenues with the best estimates we have at that time. And then in April, we anticipate on the 13th, we will go ahead and adopt that proposed spending plan. There are timelines we need to meet. And then there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the office after that. We have to approve what's called the property tax report card. It's a state document that just has all kinds of information about our current financial situation and our plans for a budget that we would like to propose. We have to file with that with the state, we have to publish it. And that's when we start distributing a lot of information to our community. The next major date is in May, May 11th, is a budget hearing. And that's where we do present the full budget to the community. And the week after that, on the 18th, is the vote. As you may recall, last year, these dates were changed very much by COVID. Hopefully, even if we do have a pandemic situation, we will be able to follow these same dates just due to time to plan now. Any questions on the budget calendar? This is going to be the bulk of our talk tonight. We're going to talk about some five-year financial projections. Now, I think you've all seen them before in some past years. But I want you to keep in mind, a five-year financial projection is not a five-year budget. We have a current budget for this year. We do not have a budget for future years. It's simply a tool that helps us analyze the long-term impact of current trends. So if we see that costs are going up in a certain area, we project out what that will do to the district financially over multiple years. If we see increases or decreases in state aid, we do the same thing. We can show, if that trend continues, what impact might it have? There's a lot of variables that impact the bottom line. There's rates of pay that between now and five years from now can change. There's the number of positions of people that we have employed that can change. It can go up or down depending on needs. And of course, all of our revenues could change throughout the next five years. I'm going to review three scenarios with you tonight. I'm going to first go through a scenario where we are going to take our baseline budget for this year, what we had planned for aid, and make the assumption that there's not going to be any more increases in state aid for the next four years going forward, which is a very real possibility. With the financial situation the state's in, without having the revenues that they've had in previous years, state aid for school districts is anticipated to not grow. I'll also look at a situation where, we'll start with this year's baseline budget, and we end up this year that they withhold 20% of the aid. And if that level stays there for the next four years, what that would look like. And last of all, I'll do a 5% state aid withheld scenario. At least for this year, there's talk of a 20% withholding, or I should say up to 20%. But there's also the possibility of some federal funding. So a 5% withholding could be a realistic situation. As I mentioned earlier, at the December meeting, the Board of Education will formally approve the financial projections at that point. Sorry, let me back up. Going to switch documents again. Now, in your folder, you should have four papers with color on them. The first one is kind of a code for you. I'd like you to have that out. I won't project that up here, but I'm going to go to the first five-year financial projection. And at the top, it's titled, "Five-Year Financial Projections: No Change in State Aid." What I've done is I've given you a little bit of a color code to walk you through some of the items here with some information on our revenues. So as you can see, in column M here, this is year 2021. Now, that means fiscal year 2021, which is our current year. When we talk about school fiscal years, the second half of the school year is how that fiscal year is named. So this revenue part, starting with line 6 and going down to line 21, this is actually based on the current budget that we adopted back last spring. The voters approved in June. So the real property tax that we currently are levying is just over 9.9 million. We have our pilots. Inner fund revenues, which I've coded in a darker gray, those are funds that we transfer into the general fund from our debt service fund, and it pays some of our debt service. Now, this is specifically the money from the sale of Florentine. As you know, we had to set that aside in a debt service fund, and it must be used to pay debt remaining on Florentine. So if you look, there's four years where we're paying $45,000 there. I'm sorry, not paying, but we're receiving that revenue from the debt service fund. And in fiscal year 2025, I have a zero there. That's because we will have used all of the proceeds from Florentine sale at that time. And additionally, the debt service that we have remaining on that building will be paid off then. So it will be the end of using that there. Backing up again to the real property taxes and the pilots. As you know, of course, we do have a tax levy limit in New York State now, or what many people refer to as a tax cap. Every single year, there's a different calculation we do at the end of February. And most of our tax levy limits or tax caps have been around an increase of between 3% and 4%. We have not gone out and levied an increase anywhere near that up to this point. And what I've done, again, to make some assumptions and keep variables consistent going forward, is as you go from each fiscal year from 2021 to 2022, I've increased the tax levy 1.9%. Again, this is not our budget. This is not saying what, that this is what we are doing. The board, in each of those years, may choose to go higher or lower, depending on the situation at the time. But we have to make some assumptions and start someplace. Going down to the green, state aid, that's the bulk of all our state aid. I've broken out below it, building aid and transportation aid separately. But again, all these numbers are, for the 2021 fiscal year, what we started with when we built our budget. And as you can see, carrying them all the way across to the right, I have left the two green ones exactly where they are. No increase in our transportation aid, no increase in our state aid. The building aid does have some minor modifications. Because as I said, building aid usually is pretty consistent once you get approval and go through a project. So I've made the assumption that our debt service schedule and our aid coming in that we've established with our financial advisors should hold true. The blue, federal aid area, that's just simply, we do get some Medicaid reimbursement. So students who are Medicaid eligible, some of the costs we have for services to them is reimbursed. So that's usually a pretty consistent number from year to year. Appropriated fund balance and reserves. So this is where we make a decision when we put our budget together. What can we do with our reserves? How should we most appropriately use them with our funding use of reserves policy to provide revenue for a budget? And you can see our current budget, we have $690,000 total there. Now, when we build our budget, we planned $20,000 to come out of our unemployment reserve. And this is one that we basically match this number every year to what our actual expenditures are. So we've had a couple of years recently where we've spent less than $5,000. So since the expenditures were very low for unemployment, we didn't take that much out of our reserves. If we spend more than $20,000 on unemployment this year, we probably will take more than $20,000 out of our unemployment reserve. Our EBLR reserve, employee benefits accrued liability reserve, this is one that gets adjusted every summer. It's the ability for the district to fund our long-term liability for employees that have accrued time off that may have a cash value when they leave employment with the district. For example, many contracts have a sick day buyout at retirement. So we do an analysis of our current employees, what their accrued time is, and we put a liability on our books of what we might have to pay, and we fund that with the reserve. Again, this is a floating number. If we have less than $20,000 of expenditures for this, for this like sick day buyouts come out in a year, we'll take less than $20,000 out of the reserve. If it's more, we'll take more. The ERS reserve, we do pay the bulk of our state retirement costs from this reserve. Now, it's important to note, this is not the teacher retirement system. This is for service employees. And we fund that pretty aggressively. It's been dwindling down a little bit over the last couple of years. We tried to fill it up a little bit last year again. We do now have a TRS reserve that's only a year old, but it has a very small amount. But basically, that's a pretty solid number most years going forward. And you see $250,000 appropriated. So that is not from a reserve. That was money left at the end of last year that the board chose, rather than putting it into a reserve, they chose to roll it into this year as a revenue, specifically because we had a one-year cost associated with carrying the deputy superintendent position this year. So when I take that and go forward into 2022, you'll notice it's a significant decrease from 690,000 to 460,000. There's not $250,000 of appropriated fund balance coming in there. We're drawing on the same three reserves as usual, because that's how our funding use of reserves policy outlines it. But if you notice, I jumped the unemployment number up to $40,000, whereas it was only $20,000 this year. And that's due to the fact that we are experiencing higher unemployment costs currently. The following year, I backed it back down more in line with what we had this year. And I left it at that same level for '24 and '25. Other is a pretty consistent number. The bulk of our other revenue is really three major sources. One is sales tax from the county. So that is approximately, we budgeted about $440,000 worth of revenue. Every once in a while, conversations come up about whether the county is still going to share sales tax with the school districts. So just to be aware, if the school district were to lose that revenue, that's a good $440,000, which would be, you know, 2% to 3% of a tax levy. Also in there, we do get refunds from BOSI's. So the way BOSI's operates is their conglomeration of all the school districts around, and they do their best to put together programs and services and price out what they're going to cost. And then they have the district subscribe. We pay the bills. But when they finish the year and they have money left over from a service, it gets refunded back to districts in the same proportion that we paid them. They don't necessarily keep all the reserves to the same level we do and stuff like that. Most of the refunds go back to districts, and that usually is a couple hundred thousand dollars that we get back. The other fairly large piece in there is interest. And when I say interest, it's two different things. It's interest on any funds that we have in banks. So for a number of years, we were earning very, very little interest. It's picked up in the last year or so. Don't know how well it will stay up there. And the other place we receive interest is on tax payments. As you know, school taxes are due during the month of September. People are also allowed to pay them during the month of October. However, there is an interest or a penalty payment, so that falls in there also. So that's the total of our revenues. Again, for this year, we build a budget of $31,749,458. And you can see going out in future years, it's going up. Well, actually, it goes down next year. And then it goes up a little bit. The reason it's going down next year is simply because we don't have that appropriated fund balance. I do want to point out, though, way out in 2025, the revenue takes a big drop again. That is specifically in the category up here on line 14 of building aid. As you can see, in 2024, we're receiving building aid of over $3.5 million, and it goes down to just under 2.3 in 2025. That's due to the 2007 project that we did. We will be receiving our last year of aid on that work in 2024. Now, the flip side that you'll see when we get further down and look at expenditures is that our debt service will be finishing up at that point also. So we'll have less money coming in, but we won't have that mortgage payment to make anymore either. And thinking long-term, this is ideally where we would want to have some new debt service start to come back on the books to keep our budget fairly consistent or flat. So it may look like it's four years out, but if you think about what it takes to go through a capital project, there's a lot of planning upfront. Then there's going out to the voters to present the project and seek their approval. And then there's sometimes up to a year of design before we get commissioners' approval on our plans. And basically, that's the date when the aid will start flowing with an early aid start. So just something to have on your radar for the future, that in the next year or two, we do need to start thinking about next plans with capital projects, because as you know, we lost a cycle or two, and we want to keep things consistent. I'm going to jump down to the expense section now. And same thing with fiscal year 2021, I've put in how we build our budget, what our actual expenditures are. And again, you see this number here of $31,749,458. That was our balanced budget. Going forward into the future years, I have to make some assumptions according to contracts, things like that, as far as what future expenditures could look like. And this is built on a model of status quo. So it's not adding new programs. It's not cutting programs. It's basically taking our current information and rolling it over. Some of the assumptions that I have had to make. Workers' compensation here. We're part of a consortium, and we do have a reserve for workers' compensation, but it's not one we use to fund our expenditures every year. It's used to fund any volatile situations. So I've just added a small increase every year going forward, because if we had a very large spike in one year, we do have the reserve designed to back that up. Healthcare, and this is actually health and dental. This is actually one of our largest increases from year to year in the budget. Trend in the healthcare industry many times sees healthcare premiums go up 10% per year. We've had years where we've gotten increases in our premiums as high as 16%. We have had a number of years recently that it has been smaller, so I built in a 5% increase. Again, we could be above that, we could be below that, but we've got to make some assumptions. Retirement costs here, this is both the TRS and the ERS, certificated employees as well as service employees. And that number does grow up year to year for a couple of reasons. First of all, as we pay more salary every year, that's probably going to drive up retirement costs, because our costs are based on the amount of salary we pay. Additionally, the contribution rates that we have to pay, the percentage of someone's income that we must pay, that is based on how well the retirement system is doing as a whole. And of course, they have money that is invested in the markets, and as markets do well, the system makes more money and doesn't have to collect as high of a rate from the contributors. The flip side is, when the markets are not doing well and their investments are not earning money, they need to have districts contribute a higher percentage. So what I've done is I've kind of actually, in addition to salaries going up naturally, I've increased our contribution rates a tiny bit over a couple of years, and then I started decreasing them during the last year or so, hoping that things would level out at that point. I'm going to jump to the very bottom for a moment, because we just went over revenues and we just went over expenditures. And down here at the very bottom is the revenue to expenditure difference. So currently, for this fiscal year, you can see the number is zero, because we, of course, built a budget for our revenue and our expenditures, when they were both estimated, they were the same amount. That's how you build a budget. Going forward, with the projections that I just did on both the revenue and expenditure side, you can see that next year, with flat state aid, 1.9% increase on the levy, natural increases in our expenditures, that we actually would have a gap of almost $1 million. The following year, 1.6, et cetera. So when you have a gap, you've got some choices to make about how we would deal with those at that time. You either need to decrease your expenditures, you need to find more revenue, or you've got to plug the hole with fund balance or reserves. So what I've done here is this line here in blue that says adjustment reserves. This shows how much money of our reserves we used in that fiscal year. So as we said before, we're using $440,000 of our reserves this year. The numbers I went through before showed 460 for next year, et cetera. So down below here, this is all of our fund balance. And line 73 is our reserves. If we have a budget that is not operating at a loss, where it's zero, we are using $440,000 of our reserves, but I factored in, we usually have a little bit money left at the end of the year. So some will go in, and I'm projecting what I think our fund balance should be at the end of the year. This carries forward to future years. So next year, when we're in an operating deficit, if these numbers were to come true, we're using $460,000 of reserves, but we've still got a hole of $983,000. So if we're not able to get more revenue or cut expenditures, we're going to have to plug that hole by depleting our reserves even more. So that's why, as you go forward here, and you look at our reserve balances, they go down every year, because these operating losses have got to be funded somehow. Does that make sense? Just reviewing a little bit with you what the different names are for the fund balance. Assigned, appropriated, fund balance. That is, at the end of every year, we have encumbrances out there. If you remember what an encumbrance is, it's money that we have assigned to pay an expense. So maybe we sent a purchase order to a vendor to purchase $100,000 worth of Chromebooks. At the end of the year, those Chromebooks haven't come in yet, but we have to hold that $100,000 to pay the bill when they come in in July. So we usually have, the number can be all over the place, but on average, maybe $300,000 of encumbrances at the end of the year would be reasonable that we're carrying over to pay the invoices in the following year. Unassigned fund balance, this is the 4% rule. We are able to hold 4% of the next year's budget in unassigned fund balance. That means it's not put in a reserve where we have limited use. That's really the district's only true savings that we have latitude with. And that number does go up a little bit here as we go forward, due to the fact that our expenditures each year go up a little, so we can hold a little more. Non-spendable fund balance. This is two major categories. What it is, is on the books, we sometimes have to pay bills at the end of the school year that are due July 1. So for example, healthcare bills are due July 1st. So I can't wait until July to start cutting checks. So we prepay some of our expenses. We pay it in June, and that's how we account for it on the books. We also have what's called due-to, due-froms, which we talked about a little bit earlier this year. Our federal money for our grants sometimes comes in at a much lower pace than the rest of our revenues. So we can have plenty of cash in the bank to pay bills and run our programs, but we don't get the money till later, just like I gave the example that, you know, some of last year's aid didn't come until August and September. So we basically, the general fund, I guess for lack of a better word, almost loans money to the federal fund for these grants to pay the expenses. And it never catches up all the way where there's a $0 balance due. So that is a piece of accounting where there's about $1 million that is always on loan to the other funds. Of course, reserved fund balance is self-explanatory. That's the total of our reserves that we've talked about. So the bottom line is, state flat, or flat state aid, without generating more revenue or decreasing expenditures, you know, we're going to be, in four to five years, we would have a negative fund balance amount. I now want to show you a 20% state aid withholding projection. So I'm not going to go through all this in detail, because everything is pretty much the same. I've taken the revenues and put them together the same way with real property taxes and pilots going up 1.9%, et cetera. All the expenditures are the same as what they were. But the big difference here is the state aid amount. We budgeted this year that our state aid, exclusive of building aid and transportation aid, would be 15.3%. Well, if 20% is withheld, we're beginning about 12.2. I did not decrease building aid, because I said that's generally safe, but I decreased our transportation aid by 20% also. So remember, we talked about we built a balanced budget this year that was $31.7 million, but we potentially, with a 20% withholding on revenues of state aid, might have a revenue budget of only 28.4. And then I've carried these numbers forward, so they're not going to take an additional 20% every year. But if they reduce it by 20% this year and then leave those numbers flat going forward, you can see what I've shown as projected revenues. As I said, the expenditures I've left as they are. So the shocking piece, or maybe not shocking, when you think about 20% of aid being withheld, shows us shows us potentially an operating expense this year of less, of a loss of over $3 million. Again, the only way to plug that hole is taking it out of your fund balance and reserves if we finish the year that way because we're not getting more revenue and we spent the money. If you look at that going forward, the loss is just greater every year. And ultimately, if we were to experience that level of decreased revenue for five years with no changes to our expenditures, you know, the district would be insolvent within a couple of years. The good news is, if there is good news, we are financially in very good shape compared to a lot of districts in the state. So when you look at a 20% cut in aid and what that does to us, it's a fraction of how much it would decimate a lot of other schools across the state. So I don't see this as a reality. It can't be. The education system in New York State would fall apart if that situation were to be sustained over that timeline. So as I always tell Mike, if you're running away from a bear, you just got to be faster than your buddy. As long as you're ahead of him, you're safe. So because school, a lot of other school districts are in worse financial shape than us, something's got to be done to address the needs of the education system as a whole. So we will be solvent much longer than a lot of other school districts. The last scenario I'm going to walk you through is very similar, but let's say realistically they withhold 5%. Maybe they do a 20% reduction, but we get some federal funding. And again, I'm not going to walk you through it all, but what I've done is the state aid is better than I just showed you, but not quite to what we budgeted. They withheld 5%. And when we get to the bottom, a 5% reduction in our aid this year would have us at an operating expense of 828,441. Now please remember, that's if we spend every penny we budgeted. When we build our budgets, good budgeting practice says we build expenditures to account for, I don't want to say worst case scenario, but we always want to make sure that we under expend what we budgeted for. So only if we were to expend every penny we budgeted for, would we be in that situation this year? But even just a 5% decrease carried out over this many years does show us in a lot of trouble four or five years out. Lot of information there, I understand that. And as I said, it will be December before the board's acts to approve. And like I said, there could be a different model at that point. We may be able to narrow it down to a specific one. It's not a budget that we're saying we have for the future, but it's us being cognitively aware of the trends going on. And as we enter our budget cycle, what do we keep in our head? Is it a time that we need to try to reduce some expenditures to protect? We do then, once that's been approved, we post it on our website for the public to see. Yes?
Are you, are you saying the 5%, if the same then withholding another 5% on top of the first 5% in the year 22?
No, no, I'm not.
In the year 22, 23?
It would be withholding the same 5%. So if you look at the state aid number in column M, which is current year, the 14,600,381, that's 5% less than what we planned. And if you look next year, column N, 2022 is the year, I've got the exact same number there. So they're freezing state aid. They're taking 5% this year. And next year, they're freezing it at that same level and taking the same 5%. It's not compounding five more every year.
All right, thank you.
So as we head into the budget cycle, we do want to be very strategic about how we make, put our budget together. And we basically have three major instructional priorities, which I'm going to give Megan just very short. She just wants to talk a little bit about the things we're going to keep in mind as we're looking at the expenditure side of the budget, what our priorities are for instruction.
So we want to continue professional development for teachers and making sure we're giving them the opportunity to learn and grow. We also want to continue our curriculum development and then alignment of our curriculum each year. I know we're doing a big focus on writing curriculum maps, but that's a living document that continues to be revised every single year as we learn new things about the curriculum and how students are responding to the way we're delivering it. And then the third piece is really looking at the management programs that we're putting in place this year to try to really streamline some of the things that we're doing with our observations, our professional development and our curriculum mapping, and then continuing to fund instructional programs such as collaborative classroom, which we just started this year, making sure we have funds to provide programs to our students.
Thank you. I mean, that's the number one reason we're here. And so we want to make sure that we're building a budget that meets those priorities. Last thing I wanted to touch base with you on is aidable expenditures. So we talked about when we have a problem with a budget gap, we can try to find more revenue, we can plug the hole with fund balance and reserves, or we can generate new revenue. It's very difficult to generate new revenue for a school district. We're not in the business of being a for-profit business. Basically, our major option is to increase the tax levy. Or here are some ways that we can get more revenue. Increase our aid. How can we increase our aid? So some of it's fixed and some of it's not, but I wanted to talk about some of the expenditures that do generate aid for us. And when we talk about an expenditure being aidable, doesn't mean we get money back and they give us a discount. It means they give us money the next year. So we still have to make the expenditure in the current year, but it will be a new piece of revenue for a following year. Textbooks are one area that is aidable. There is a limit on that, if you remember from your fiscal training. We will be reimbursed the next year up to $58.25 per pupil. So if we only spend $30 per pupil, they will only pay us the following year what we spent, the $30 per pupil. If we spend 58.25 per pupil, that's what we'll get back. If we spend 100 per pupil, we're welcome to do that, but they will not reimburse more than 58.25. We have a similar structure with instructional computer hardware expenses. They will give us up to 24.20 per pupil. Software, just under $15 a pupil. And library materials, $6.25 per pupil. So when I work with the administrators to put together their building budgets, we need to, we make sure that we do target those numbers and the allocations that I give them for textbook money is in line with that 58.25 per pupil. I want to make sure that they spend at least that much on textbooks. If they choose to spend it in a different area, that means we won't get aid next year that we had planned on. They're welcome to spend more if that's where their needs are, take some of the materials and supplies and spend more on textbooks. But we want to make sure that we do maximize those areas. Some of these costs are not so set in stone. BOSI's aid, you hear us talk about often. Every school district has its own BOSI's aid ratio and that does change from year to year. It's based on a lot of factors such as the wealth of the district, et cetera. Currently, our BOSI's aid ratio is about 68%. So that means when we do expenditures through BOSI's, not counting special ed expenditures, because I'll talk about those separately. But when we do things such as using the central business office, we run substitute costs through BOSI's, et cetera. By running things through BOSI's, we can generate about 68% of that back in revenue the following year in the form of BOSI's aid. Now there's limitations. Certain things are aidable, certain things are not. But when we do add functions through BOSI's, generally it does create some type of a revenue stream for the district. Transportation aid, that again is a ratio that does change from year to year a little bit. We're currently at about 87%. So most of our costs in the transportation area will get about 87% back next year. Now there's some limits. For example, they look at the number of miles that we've put on our buses that aren't for aidable purposes and they'll decrease our aid by that percentage. And when it comes to benefits for employees in the area of transportation, they will only give us transportation aid on a single healthcare policy. So we may be paying for a family healthcare policy for an employee, but they'll only give us aid on the part that would be the cost of single. So there's some limitations. But generally, that's a pretty good reimbursement rate. Of course, we also do get that applied to our bus purchases, which if you notice, bus purchases, we're not even on that five-year financial projection because as you know, we pay cash out of our bus reserve and we do not have any debt service. So we run all of that through the capital fund. High-cost aid. High-cost aid is aid for high-cost students generally in the area of special education. And there are forms that special education office works with a third party to submit every year. They're called STACK forms. Stands for, I believe, System for Tracking and Accounting of Children. And in a nutshell, every school district has what's called an AOE, an approved operating expense. And to break it down in a simple concept, it's basically what we spend on average to educate a child. Now with high-cost students, we know they cost us more. When the amount that we're spending for special education student services is above three times that average number, that approved operating expense, we start getting aid back on the number that's above that threshold of three times. So when we have a student that we're spending $100,000 on, you know, the first $30,000,000, that's just all on us, but then we start getting aid between the $30,000,000 and $100,000 difference. Currently, our public access cost ratio is 70.7% and our private is 91.4. The difference in those two different types of aids, public access cost is for our students that we send to student, to programs that are in public schools or BOSI's. And that's where the bulk of our placements are. Private access cost is, and I wrote ration, sorry, instead of ratio, public access cost is when students are sent to, I'm sorry, private, is when they're sent to a private school. Maybe we have to send a student to a place like Norman Howard or something like that. Those come through at a different ratio and a different type of aid. And of course, whenever we look at capital projects, you do know that we do receive building aid back on our expenditures, usually 15 years for renovations. And currently, our building aid ratio has been holding steady around 83.5%. This building aid ratio does also apply to the capital outlay project of $100,000 that we build into our budget every year. The only difference with the capital outlay project is we don't get that 83,500 back over 15 years. We get it back the very next year. Apologize if a lot of this is review, but just keeping it in our forefront. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about all of that.
Bob, I had a question on, it was a slide back in the beginning, it was state aid, but I'm not sure that we even need to go to it. Say again? Is that any better? I'm unmuted. Well, I mean, I can do this, but that's is that any better?
Well, I guess we can hear you.
I can hear you, Paul.
Okay, so going back to that one that was state aid. I wrote down that we ended up getting about $160,000 less than we expected. Does that, does that ring a bell?
It's about $260,000.
Okay. But, but my question is, that's not a bill that's due, right? I mean, that was just that we, we reduced the amount.
Yeah, that is just a paycheck that we didn't get and we couldn't put in the bank.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? John?
Bob, when you budget for software, it's
You're fine. So, so software is actually not distributed to buildings in part of their building budget. The software, the hardware, that's all kept at a district level, managed under a technology budget. And expenditures for software, hardware, et cetera, that all goes through technology committee and they make the decisions of how to spend that. So that's not on a building allocation. And basically what we do is we spend well more than that dollar amount every year in software. What we do though is we don't budget much, we only budget about that much in the software line. Once we hit that magic number, and I work closely with Lisa Brower as far as what we're spending, once we hit that, we then start shifting our software purchases over to BOSI's and then we collect BOSI's aid on it instead. BOSI's aid at 60 some percent isn't as good as 100% reimbursement, but we maximize that 100%. Then we shift it over. We do the same thing with hardware, with computer purchases.
And a further question is, what's the estimate?
You know, I don't really have that exact data right now. It's not increasing though, I can tell you that.
We're under 1,100, according to the
Yeah, current, yes.
That's quite a big drop.
Hi Bob, thank you for the presentation. I'm assuming you guys are working out different game plans just in case this, these guesses become reality.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate all the time you spent on this.
My pleasure.
I hope we never have the game plans.
We all hope that.
We use education programming through the computer versus through textbooks. Is any of that money eligible for reimbursement through textbooks?
There is a lot of latitude with textbook funds being able to be used for online learning resources, provided that it still meets the same parameters as a textbook, that it is a major source of instruction, et cetera. Additionally, this is a secret I haven't told everybody. The state has also become a little bit more lax on those dollar amount per students, where they give us some leeway to, for example, if we actually underspent our textbook aid, but we spent more in the area of software aid, they would let us shift that aid over. And that's something that I really don't bother the building administrators with. They try to hit their target numbers. And then in the spring, I start looking and see, how are we doing towards our target? And, you know, maybe we'll spend a little bit more on a specific textbook thing. I'll talk with Megan about that or whatever, but we'll wash those out at the end. We always make sure we maximize that.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. That was, yes, that was a good review. And it, every year that I hear, hear your presentation, I, I think I retain more, understand more about this process. It's a very complicated one, that's for sure. Let's return to the agenda. We're at the consent agenda. Number three on your, on your agenda. A motion to approve the consent agenda, Linda and Paul. Discussion. Questions? This covers us on our agenda pages one through four, I believe. Jason?
If Michael doesn't mind, could he just give us a brief overview on letter F?
Let us, what page are you on? Number two?
Page two, yep. I'm assuming that's a result of the delay in COVID, pushing the contracts out, but.
Actually, what says, I believe, and Bob, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. So on the north end of the building.
Actually, it's, it's the main bus opening, I believe, this one.
Okay. So there's some site work that we have some issues with, and we had to revisit some numbers based on some delays. So back in July and August, we had one price, and then based on how things got off.
I'm sorry, can you send Turner microphone off? It's echoing really bad.
And I, and I can jump in here, Mike. It's, it has to do with the main entrance where students come in off the buses, where they have for years, where they will continue to do so. If you were to be over there and see, the doors and the frames around there are very, they're, they're very deteriorated. And they were not originally scheduled in the initial project to be replaced. There was some going back and forth for a while because due to the extension of the general conditions, as you are all well aware of, they had included in this change order a cost for forklift, which we had already paid extra for a forklift when we paid the extension of the general conditions. So we disagreed on the price. And as I've given you a little education in my weekly reports, when we get a proposal from a contractor and we cannot agree with it, and we do not feel it's a fair price, but we can't let work continue to just sit there, we do the construction change directive, which, the CCD, which is where we say, you need to proceed, you need to do it, this is the price. And the difference between our price and their price is basically the addition of forklift, which we already paid for in a different area. They, of course, will complete the work. They may not like the price. They have legal recourse if they would like to come back and say we owe them more later on. But right now, this is about keeping it going, and it is a change order over 20,000. That's why it's got to come to the board.
I'd just like to acknowledge one of the employees retiring. A long time. Has done some really congratulating.
Okay. In, any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? And the motion is carried. At this time on our agenda, we have good news. Anyone have good news? Paul, do you have good news? Jason? To you, who wants to go first?
I'll go, I'll go first. Actually, there wasn't, there was a real dearth of information on the Lakeshore News recently, but I do have some good news for sure. And our boys soccer team is now 6-2 on the season, so we're well on the way to a winning season. Beat Red Creek the other night, 7-3. And, and this is perhaps the, the best news. One of the referees sent an email to our coach, Bert, and complimented our team, our boys, on their courtesy and their sportsmanship. And I thought that was really great to hear. So that's my good news for the evening.
That's extremely good news. Absolutely. Jason, did you have something to add?
Yeah, are we doing the liaison reports now, or are we going to wait till later in the meeting?
We, yeah, we generally have those set for the, just the first meeting.
Perfect.
Is that okay? Can you wait, or is there something you really want to get out? Okay.
Well, there's one thing. Because we got to do our shout out. We, we got to at least do our shout out every, every meeting, right? So North Rose Elementary would like to give a shout out to Carolyn Youngs. We have so many things to be thankful for with her support, guidance, humor, and most recently for transitioning Becky into her new role in UPK. She's really stood out in the last, since the last report, and I didn't think we should wait another week.
All right.
So we'll, we'll do the rest of it next, next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to board discussions. We had talked about working on the handbook presentation this time. Linda, would you want to address that? These hidden things. We had talked about having a meeting of the handbook committee, but I hadn't taken into account that this is the New York State School Board Association Convention Week. So we have not met, but we do have the page five ready to review, and we're working on setting up a meeting in the coming week. So hopefully for the first meeting, we'll be ready to go. Great guns. Okay, thank you. There being no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Isetta and Tina? All in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you and good night.